...three forty Oak Street and hopefully a discussion about how these problems can be resolved. I see that we have a member of our Board of Health who has joined us tonight. Thank you.
Hi, thank you, Donna Bagney. I'm actually here in place of Lisa Collin who was on vacation. So I'm here to help answer any questions.
Well, I know that we're sort of in this situation, we do have some sort of coordinating responsibilities because our site plan and your septic system review will kind of overlap a little bit here. Correct. Why don't we start by having the, are you representative, the owner of the building?
I'm representing Harry Kirby, yes.
Which one?
Jim Thornton.
Jim Thornton?
That's correct.
And?
John Poria.
John Poria, who is the tenant of the building?
Yes.
Okay, so if nobody objects, why don't we start with the owner's representative, Mr. Thornton, to sort of give us an update on where we stand. Does that make sense?
Okay, in light of this problem, we have just hired Merrill Associates to design for us a new septic system, a new perk test, and at the same time, it's hoping to get the hill to figure out a way to solve this drainage problem. The drainage itself was an issue last month. It's starting to look pretty good right now as vegetation is starting to grow back in, so the silt is less of a factor than it was before. But with that said, I understand we have to worry about the big storms, the heavy rainstorms. And so we're looking into creating additional set swales on a catch basis, so it won't be a problem in the future. We've been in that building for a very, very long time and it feels like history is repeating itself, where we had floods coming from the upper side, which is now corporate part of our property, people in. And the drainage was all redesigned back in the seventies and again in the eighties. And it looks like we'll be doing it for the third time. And we're willing to cooperate, I would say.
Yeah, I mean, just for a little bit of history from our perspective, this sort of whole issue with when the planning board was not precipitated originally by septic issue, it was precipitated by the clearing of the land and the addition of parking on that side of the property that had not been there before. And there was no site plan request or a site plan review on that. So when we had seen it, we had given a limited sort of temporary permission to use that parking space if there were some improvements made in the short term to address that issue. It was during, it was after those improvements were made to sort of grade the property that we found out that the system was in failure. And that sort of just kind of overlapped with the fact that we had a situation where the parking lot was not ideal. We didn't have a fully engineered parking lot there with drainage that had been fully engineered to take into account that additional space for parking. And it just so happened that the failed septic system was in the part where the water seemed to pool. I don't know if that was because of the septic system's failure or because of the way it was graded.
Hecky, if I could throw my own-
Your opinion.
My own little opinion in here. Probably when they cleared the trees, they ran heavy equipment over the septic system and that caused it to fail. Either by breaking the pipes or disruption.
I just want to bring it to light that in November twenty first, two thousand sixteen, the health board was aware that there was an issue with the septic system. They granted them the right to pump it three times. I think it was, it had, I don't think it had anything to do with the clearing. If this document here from the health board, now, the question is, can I read from Jim?
Pumped four times in a year, then it's all kind of automatic failure.
Right, but they're pumping it three times in a month.
Okay.
Well, I believe that that's because the system was deemed to be in failure, but there was some belief that a new system was going to be installed at some point?
Well, and I would like to just state that these are notes that unfortunately we tried to get together or had Lisa put something in writing as the health agent, having visited the site and been dealing directly with the pumping companies and the owners. So these were notes that we went through, I went through this morning, but I just wanted to kind of bullet point that, you know, November twenty first, two thousand and sixteen, the agent reported that the field house had entered into a contract with Heritage Pumping due to the fact that it was failing and that they were going on a three-month pumping and inspection every six weeks due to the septic system failure.
Right, but I think the clearing, from my recollection-
I don't know when that took-
-was done in January or someplace like that.
Yeah, later, yeah.
Because you came to us in the spring when it turned to mud. But then, I'm reading from-
I think the clearing was done last summer, I think.
I don't know. I'm just going by what I have in front of me. Jim, is this from you?
I don't know.
This is a-
Miguel, a recent-
Yes, and it says that, it says that you recently found out from Mr. Poria and from the planning board about the failure of the septic system, which is brought to light. I'm wondering why, if it had gone into failure in November?
Well, it wasn't a failure, it wasn't-
Well, when you start pumping three times a month, there's an issue.
If it wasn't, it wasn't deemed a failure, they thought there was a broken pipe and we were investigating that and then they said that-
But my question is-
It's just in usage.
My question is, why isn't the owner of the property aware? Was a document ever sent to the owner of the property stating that there was an issue with the septic system?
That I cannot verify because I don't have that information, so I'd like to just be able to clarify that.
All right, the only reason is because if a document had gone from the health board to the building, then when the planning came up to say you could do this, we would have said no. We're unaware of the problem with the septic system because there is no documented paper line that shows that there was a problem until water is, septic is coming out into that space.
My answer, it's two separate things. We were pumping because the usage of the building was more than the septic system was designed for. That's why we, I called up the health inspector, we came down and the pumping said, hey, you should pump. So they were coming out weekly and checking the tank.
But does that make sense to you?
It was the usage for the sports complex, the septic system don't line up. So the septic wasn't able to handle the usage. So the failure was after the fact.
But once that happens, once that happened, it probably should have been, the owners of the building should have been notified there was an issue with the septic system. All right, so that any work in that site, we would have said, wait, until you have a designed septic system, we're not going to allow you to park on your septic system. You know what I'm saying?
Can we back up here? It seems like we have an immediate public health issue, is the way I look at it. So regardless of what paperwork, where, when, I don't care. Can that be converted to a tight tank? And I'm thinking this is probably like a couple of hours' worth of work for someone like SLT to maybe just put a plug in the outlet of that tank and put a high-level alarm in there to make sure nothing is coming in-
We already did.
To make sure nothing is coming in or coming out of that tank.
I believe at the box that goes into the leaching field, they blocked it. So nothing gets into the leaching field now. It's, that's why we're having it pumped, as much as we are right now. We're getting it pumped every two weeks. And I believe he comes out every week to test the level. And if the level he believes is going to get up to the top, they pump it sooner. So if you don't test it every week, and then he, so nothing's really escaping the main tank.
I mean, that process was ongoing when there was public storage there in May, June.
Well, it couldn't have been plugged, could it?
No, that, this is just recent.
Just recent.
Because they just said that it failed. We thought there was a pipe leading from the top down to the tank, which was causing, we had all this rain and they were doing all the work and everything. So they said, well, let's see what it is. So they tested the top pipe. There was no leakage. And then it's actually from, the leaching field itself is not accepting anymore. But I guess it was groundwater.
So that has now been plugged?
Yes, at the box itself, my understanding is.
Or is what you've said, potentially a broken pipe immediately, either way, so.
Yeah.
Well, so I look at this as, no, obviously some of these issues are for the Board of Health to figure out, right? And some of them are for us to figure out because right now we have an order out there that allows people to park where the leaching fields are and that allows that field to be used. I guess I'm looking at it as where do we go in terms of pretty quick solution? I hear you on the immediate public health issue, the pumping may, if they truly plugged it up and are pumping and sort of treating it like a de facto tight tank, that may deal with the immediate public health issue, but it doesn't seem like a problem. I mean, a solution that really-
Well, I mean, they've given out the design for a septic-
Yeah, I took the next day off work. I came up here, told Matthew, I went, met with Merrill, I met with the owner of the building. I said, we need to get this done as quick as we can.
So, Donna, are you guys happy that there's no immediate public health issue now?
I'm happy that there's no immediate public health. My quandary at the moment is that as back as far as December two thousand and sixteen, the field house was looking into expanding its facility and engineering requirements to do so. We're now sitting here in August and further, since we put on the every two weeks, since the health agent has advised that pumping will be done every two weeks, that the size of the facility, in order to replace that septic in that field, while there's a Band-Aid on it now, they have to replace, the field is in failure, so therefore they need a whole new design. But they're waiting for ZBA and planning to determine-
But they shouldn't be waiting on us.
No, they're not waiting for planning because we don't, so although they also told us that they were going to expand, we've never gotten a design to expand.
Right, and that is, that's one of the things, is after, he was before the planning board, okay, John Poria stated, he was waiting on planning under the ZBA for answers about expanding his facility. The size of the facility is directly related to the size of the septic system and vice versa.
But he wasn't waiting on answers?
Well, this is what the health agent, information the health agent has lacked in her absence. After he was before the planning board, the last time, he stopped by the Board of Health office and said to tell Lisa, he was contacting an engineer to get the ball rolling. We have not received a call from an engineer to schedule a perk test, which is the first step in the process of designing.
Did we have, no, we had an email from Merrill.
Merrill Associates has one here saying that they reached out to them for a design.
But I still feel like we kind of have a lot of circular discussions going on. And so that's why I'm glad you're here tonight, Donna. Because the Board of Health is hearing that you're waiting on zoning and planning. Zoning and planning or waiting for an actual design as to whether there's going to be an expansion or just a full design of the parking lot. Either way, I think we've indicated when we looked at the temporary fix, that we had to do something about the traffic flow in and out of there and that this was just a temporary fix. In fact, Peter says that he thought that it was really just a fix for six to eight weeks, which is actually what I had recalled. That it was just not to continue beyond June even. So I guess my question is, is this facility being expanded or is Merrill's just looking at how to engineer the septic system and the parking lot to exist for the current size of the building?
Yeah, so we were, I was in talks with investors about expanding and we were, you can talk to Peter, we were going back and forth. What about this size? Will this fit? Does this fit with requirements? Then the investors just kind of went crazy. So it was like, all right, well, what do we need to do just to make an existing building? What do we need to do? So I met with Peter, we talked and we said, all right, we have five courts in there, we have a training area in there. How many bathrooms do you have? What do you expect it for the flow? And we're doing all that stuff. And then he's going to design the septic system that meets-
That capacity.
The capacity. And then he's going to meet, as he said, the parking and the drainage all have to, they're intertwined with the parking. So he said, when you're doing the septic, you want to do the drainage. And then that is all with how much ground cover you have, impervious ground. So it's the existing parking lot because the plan that he submitted for the temporary, you guys wanted to exit further out closer to the intersection.
We want a better flow.
Yeah, so he has that. So he's working on that now. He's doing the perk test because he's saying, that'll decide if we can go right back without, leaching field is now or it goes back up where the old one was up closer to the door at the higher ground.
Well, as I recall that conversation we had with the temporary parking, after the season was done, we were talking about not knowing, this is where I was going before, not knowing that we had a failed septic system. And we were talking about a septic system that was fine and that they were going to come in in asphalt and put in drainage around what we had just gave them temporary for. And that's where I was going with the idea of not knowing that there's a failed system would have been nice to know.
Because we were going down a path that really wasn't going to work.
Right, because we would have said to you is to come up with the, your design that's approved by the health board before you come to us, you know, or make sure that your drainage and your septic are going to fit within that site plan prior to moving forward with any other thing you were planning on doing.
Yeah, at the time when I came in, septic wasn't considered failed. They're saying it's failed now because nothing, can't take anything anymore.
Well, I mean, I consider if you have to take, start pumping it two or three times a month, then you got to fail.
Well, I was doing that as a precaution on my end at the beginning.
My point is, my point is it was failed. It was just unknown to us that it was, I mean, it could have been when it was grass, you didn't even notice it would have an issue. Once you remove that and it became a problem.
Donna, when did, when was it actually determined that it failed? Is that November?
Well, at our November twenty first meeting was when our health agent had advised us then. She was automatically, that the field house had entered into the contract with Heritage Pumping to pump every three weeks with an inspection automatically every six weeks. I'd be curious, just only, can I apologize, but I kind of got to this last minute. Matthew, can you see if Sheila can pull anything in regards to a letter that went to the owner of the field house? I know she's downstairs, remember? In regards to a failed system and what that date was when it was-
I guess I can, so, sorry, just ask-
Yeah, just ask her if she's got a file on the field house and I'll go through it myself. If she can run it upstairs.
Yeah, sure.
That might, yeah, let's open it up.
Give us a little clarity.
Let's open it up, let's see if we can, because any letters came to it.
Yeah, I was just going, before I forget, the traffic study, we have to make sure that part of the engineering process to expand the number of cars in there and the amount of parking in there and having another exit, I think we're going to need to see some sort of traffic study to show that the intersection of the street there can handle this flow.
Well, now, I think he is planning on coming on the twenty eighth.
Yep.
My question is, has he given you a timeline as to how long it's going to be for the septic system to redesign and planning for the new parking?
He said the septic design and drainage done at the same time. He said that would be done pretty quick. He's just going to do the perk test to see where the best spot is.
He said pretty quick. It's going to take them probably a month minimum.
I don't think it's going to be that long because I had asked him, I said, we have nothing, the last week in August and the first week in September are there. I said, Peter, what are the odds of getting the design and be able to put that in when we're not open? And he said, well, it'll be closed, but-
She's gone.
Somebody else, he's on vacation this week, but somebody else in his office-
He's working on it.
Does that design. He doesn't do the actual septic design, he does the drainage.
You're shut down the first weekend.
Yeah, the last week in August, it's like August twenty sixth to September fifth or sixth.
And after that, you're going to open up again.
Yeah, we just have practices, yeah.
And how busy is the parking area going to be at that time?
We won't get into the side parking at all until the weekend, until the end of September. Because it's just practices, parents drop kids off and they leave.
So at the end of September, you will expect to be in full operation again?
Yeah, end of September, yeah, pretty, end of September, end of November, yeah.
I think you're pushing, you're getting everything moving at the time. But let Peter tell you that.
Donna, how frequently are you guys meeting these days?
Perk, we're actually meeting Monday evening, Lisa will be back. This outbreak has been on our agenda. We've been getting updates. She has still been waiting for the scheduled perk test.
I thought he had already scheduled because when I called the other day, he goes, I'll talk, we reached out to them. What we're going to do is ask them when's the, could it be done?
And did he give you a date?
He just said he reached out to me. He sent me an email that he sent to you guys. I'll CC it on that.
What date was that?
I don't know, I didn't have the letter. He CC'd me the letter to you guys that they had called the Board of Health and scheduled it.
Because I think there's, you know, just, my own sense is that it's just, it's just the ball being passed back and forth.
No, I mean, right after that meeting, I took everything you guys said seriously. I'm trying to do the right thing. I took the next day off work. I met with Peter, I went to the building owner. I said, we need to address this right away. And I actually emailed Scott the next day, said we were, we're moving on as quick as we can.
It says we have submitted a proposal for soil testing. But it doesn't say who they submitted. I'm assuming it's-
Soil testing, so then that means that there is an invalid perk.
Oh, he said-
Well, no, it says that he submitted it to the property owner on August first.
Yeah, so he, yeah, he can get signed back.
Received a signed proposal back in August eighth, and we will be scheduling the soil testing and septic design within the next few days. So the request came in.
I have nothing that was put on, I have no letter or no item on our agenda for Monday. I just sat and went through everything this morning to do the agenda for Monday.
Yeah, I can reach out to his office tomorrow and see what it's hit. Because he had told me that it was, he has coordinated with you guys, somebody to be on the bottom, has to be there.
Right, exactly. Lisa has to, the health agent does have to be on site for that perk test. But having that perk test done and then determining if, number one, it's a clean perk or seven hours, it has to be done. You've got a field that's in failure, can't go back there, have to find another spot, then it has to go to engineering, it has to go to outside engineering for review. And then it's got to go out to quotes for install.
He just said, yeah, that's pretty, he thought it might be able to write back to where it was. I said, well, I'm going to go back there. He goes, depending on the reason for the failure.
Oh, you redone once.
I thought, that letter came in and I had talked to him, said they were scheduling it. Because he was waiting for, back to the owner, he sent it to him, CC'd me on it. And I called him up that day. He goes, yeah, we'll get a perk test scheduled as quick as we can. And I said, well, it's cheaper for me if we put it up high. He goes, no, the gravity's what you want to feed it down. That's why they put it lower in the property. So I said, just do the test there.
Well, if they plugged the pipe going from the D-box.
To the leaching field.
To the leaching field, which means they plugged it so that nothing would bleach. So therefore that field, I have to be pretty safe to say that it's in failure. So you could put another field there, but you'd have to remove-
To remove and replace.
Remove and replace, which would be a massive undertaking, dollar wise, because you'd be-
You hurt my ear.
No, no.
Now it's just move, it's the same thing, yeah.
Yeah, no, so you have to, that's what the perk test will do. Will identify another place on the property and forgive me, I don't know the parking lot, but is there another spot on that property where it will satisfy a perk for the number of-
Size of the field.
The public going in there and using the system.
So we don't know, we don't know it was designed for originally, so it could have been undersized all along.
Could have been.
Now all of a sudden you get massive groups of people using it.
It had been designed for a different use, warehouse, some facility, more likely than not.
Well, it used to be tennis courts or something.
Yeah, it was tennis courts originally, then it was the warehouse.
Right. But when we added on to the warehouse in nineteen eighty seven, we had to double basically the size of the septic system. And I was told at that time, it wasn't by the number of our employees, but the square feet of the building. And so the system should be able to handle it if a lot more people came in.
And what year was that?
Nineteen eighty seven.
But if there was a warehouse, flow rate for a warehouse is nothing compared to uses there now.
Thirty to sixty employees.
Yeah, but when you say the size of the building, if you look on the website, Donna, you know this better than I do, and Jim is actually a licensed engineer, but if you look on the website, you'll see that it's not just the size of the building, it's also the use of the building. So a warehouse use will be different than if you have the same size building, I mean, it'd be radically different, the same size building suddenly if you have a restaurant, right? Something in between there may be, an athletic facility may be a different weight per square foot or something. Or, you know, for a thousand square feet used as an athletic facility, you might have a different flow rate than for a thousand square feet used as warehouse.
I'm assuming that Merrill will take all this into consideration, that a new system will be designed in accordance with those requirements.
But the question is, how realistic is it that this will happen before you're back in tournament mode in September?
It'll still be pumping, that's all. But they can't move forward with anything else. The drainage can't happen until the, the repairs to the drainage system can't happen until septic goes in.
I mean, I guess what I'm hearing is that it's unlikely that we're going to have a fully engineered parking lot before the winter.
No, but I had talked to Merrill about what we can do to make sure that no water leaves the property. And he had talked about grass swales and temporary retention ponds at the lower elevations if we can't get everything done. I said, well, what can we do? So I'm not getting yelled at. And he says, well, when I do the design, we can do a design so that we can't get it weather permitting. He seemed to think that we could get the septic in and the drainage in. He just said, well, by the time the plants close, you might not be able to get it graded properly so that you could pave it. So he said he didn't think that, he said, you could get the septic in and the drainage in, but it's the pavement. That he wasn't sure that we could get it. He goes, you'll be pushing. If everything lines up perfect, you'll be good. But I haven't had that locked because when we were putting it in, I was hoping to get the temporary parking lot in before the season so I could generate some money. And they didn't even finish it until after our season. They painted the lines two weeks after we were done. It was just all that rain and they couldn't go on it. It was all mud.
Where is your season, your season is for when?
The busy season is the spring. The fall season is a lot smaller. So we're a busy season on, just on the weekends. The night stuff stays the same year round, it's just practice. I don't draw them up. So the busy season in the fall is like the last week in September and goes to the last week in November, just before Thanksgiving. And then it's back to just practices every night, the practices there. So we don't even use it. And it won't be the kind of traffic we have in the spring. Like the tournaments there in the spring would have about eighty teams or a hundred teams there. In the course of the weekend, in the fall, that drops down to half. You have about forty because so many kids play soccer, so many kids play football, the basketball just drops down.
I'm sure the designer is going to indicate to the county how to remember spaces based with-
Yes, like he, Peter did the design for the U. When we built that and there was a gray area in the code, so he had a, on the side of caution, we went above, I forget whatever it was, but we went above. I think they said they needed twenty-five spots per court and I think we did thirty per court over there so that we would have additional space. And the same thing for the usage on the septic. We went larger so that if there was any future stuff over there, which they did, that the septic could handle it. I think they put ten thousand gallons a day. Is that what it is? The biggest you could do before it's a treatment plant.
Ten thousand.
Yeah, so that's what he ended up doing over there. But he said we wouldn't even-
What you call a large system over ten thousand gallons.
Yeah, so he said that we wouldn't even come close to that.
You want this charge, you want all that.
Yeah, so that's what we did over there. We went to the biggest we could.
You have that, right?
It's a lot of money.
So you guys don't even have that?
Well, no, we, well, we actually spent four million-
Well, no, we, well, we actually spent four million dollars on the Lowe's treatment facility. So all of Pembroke North River, all of Pembroke Square, the new Taco Bell and everything, and all of Lowe's, all goes to Lowe's. It's all treated.
And that's a large-
We pump it underneath, we went thirty-nine. So, I mean, that was, and that's over fifteen thousand, that's groundwater discharging, that's a, a lot of paperwork and a lot of money. And you need a grade five operator to operate it daily, so it's, it's a, it's an expense.
Maybe, maybe we can take yours and we'll charge you for this.
Not a bad idea.
A little, you know.
It's not a bad idea.
Yeah, 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 I mean, Peter thought that we could fit it with-
If you've got the capacity, it might not be a bad idea at all.
Maybe they, maybe America can talk with them.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how far away is that, I think if it's cheaper option, giving to you guys, I'll give you all the crap.
Well, just remember-
I'll give you all the-
Just remember, it's me going out, so whatever you're running over to them, you get your charge for, right, just like the-
Yeah, he seems, I think we hit the whole leaching field, and just depending on where we replace it. Because if the older one was up by the doors, right, and then they moved it down to the bottom end. But his recollection, because he did the leaching fields, did the septic design years ago, is that everything to the left, like the loading dock side, was more sandy than on the, at the top. He said, up near the top, where they have the leaching come out, it's more of a clay, because that's where the tennis courts were through it, at the front.
So I'm wondering if we should have one of our, I mean, there's part of me that says there's only so much we can do tonight without knowing where Lisa stands on the perk test scheduling, and without knowing where Merrill is.
Right, on the, on the fringe.
So, Matthew, do you have this tentatively set on the twenty-eighth?
Yeah, yeah, Peter, Peter said he's already sort of put it on his schedule to come tentatively on the twenty-eighth, on the assumption that, you know, that would make sense, that you guys would like that. Which makes sense to me, I think, I think you guys would want us to, if you had to have a direct conversation with Peter on both.
Well, maybe by then he'll have a little to sign.
Yeah, exactly.
So for the parking area, over the septic system, is it kind of like one of those situations where the damage is done, and it doesn't matter if people are parking on it?
Imagine, yeah, if it's blocked off now, it's gonna dry up, and it's probably gonna be all hair.
At this point, it's a tight tank.
Yeah, it's a tight tank, you know, so I wanted to check that it is now actually a tight tank.
Yeah, and I'll follow up, Waste Water, man, we carried its waste waters. I'll follow up with them tomorrow. But, yeah, he, he comes out, tests the, lifts it up, make sure the bill's clean, tests the water level. And they started pumping every two weeks, and the bill's actually a little bit lower, the gallons they pump out, so I'm assuming-
Nothing's going-
There's two reasons for making it a tight tank, one is to make sure nothing flows out, but if you get a heavy rain, you don't want it getting filled up.
Well, that's what was happening.
Over the weekend, and no one's there, and then suddenly someone flushes inside and-
Well, that was what was happening, is that we were noticing that everything was pugging right above that. So I was calling them up on Friday night or Saturday, saying, can you come out and pump it as a precaution? Can you pump it out? And he would pump, tank itself in the leaching field. And, you know, he'd come out on Saturdays and Fridays, and he'd come out, yeah. Because the water was all just sitting there.
The question is, is that was it actually water that couldn't, couldn't go down in the leaching field? And, and trust me, I had, had one fail on me in my house. So what happens is, when your leaching field fails, the tank water is still trying to get out that field, it's just sitting out there like a pool of water. Okay, and if it's high enough, when you pump, it will come back through the pipe reversed, because your field can't discharge it.
Well, that's what's happening, he was pumping out-
Heavy rain-
Well, it's not, it wasn't even heavy rain, I think it's just, it's, it just can't go, because you're locked up in the silty sand, and, and it becomes like a tank out there.
Well, that's what it was, he was sticking the hose in, and he was there for forty-five minutes, pumping from the leaching field.
Correct, but so that would mean to me that he didn't have a cap.
Not at the time, no, but since they came out, my understanding was, she wanted it pumped every two weeks.
Otherwise, you'd be, you'd be pouring groundwater, yeah, it should be safe now.
So Donna, you guys have it on your agenda for next Monday?
We do not have it on our agenda for this Monday, we have an update.
Okay.
But if you're scheduling a meeting for the following week, I definitely think that I will give these questions that I have, as well as the board, to Lisa Monday, so she gets back, and I think she really should reach out to someone on the planning board who with the entire file. On, was it a, when was the fail, when were the, the letters sent, copies of the letters? Because there's, it's just-
Yeah, was it sent to the owners and the whole thing?
Correct, and I think that that's just a missing piece, and I apologize, she just didn't have an opportunity to pull it all together before she left.
Well, you don't have to apologize, we're all trying to pull it together right now.
Right, hopefully we'll have a design by then, from Merrill Associates, and a, and hopefully a perk test.
Right.
I was just wondering if you, if we should have somebody come to your meeting, just to, to make sure we stay up to speed. But it sounds like it's not gonna be a full agenda item, so you'll just have Lisa tell us what you guys discuss, or what she finds out?
Correct.
Okay. And then we'll hear it again on the twenty-eighth, at seven o'clock, or?
Yeah, seven o'clock should be good, let me just check here.
So the standing water, which was the sewage puddle in the middle of the parking lot, that was known at the end of June, the parking lot is over the field?
Yes.
Yes.
Over the field?
Yes, the temp, it's half and half.
Was it?
It's half under the pavement and half on the temporary stuff.
Okay. And so the puddling that was happening on the temporary was, appeared to be a discharge with an obnoxious odor? So that, that puddle on the temporary parking wasn't that, it appeared to be, wasn't that, I should say, it appeared to be from the leaching field bubbling up?
Correct. And then on, on July twelfth, pumping was done, there was a pump done. It was to be inspected every week, then it went to three, it went to two.
Okay, so seven o'clock then, seven o'clock on August twenty-eighth.
I mean, and just to be clear, I was worried about it because I stepped in it. And, and the feeling was, huh?
Being tracked in, and the general public is-
Well, and that's where kids are bouncing the balls, and-
Yeah, I think it was the drainage was coming, top of the building, it's a, it's a drainage system, and through our stormwater, and it went, and it actually made it open into the wetland areas on the-
And your property is?
South of Chalk.
South of Chalk, okay, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, we should have identified that we also heard someone here from our case centers.
Scott.
Hi Scott, I'm Donna, nice to meet you.
That was the chair.
I am the current chair, yes.
Um, and then you guys have changed officers to shift. Okay.
I'm usually on that side of the table over there. I'm very quaint right now, that's great.
Okay, so not much more we can do tonight, I think we, we have a sense of where we are, and where we've, how we've gotten here, but we really need to see Merrill's, what Merrill's gonna do, and whether or not you guys have any more information for us.
Well, that's a perk is scheduled, because I don't, I would be hard pressed to think that Merrill could design a system without actually having-
No, I said, you gotta wait for the perk test, because I asked him, I said, can you start it now, so I can, you can say, hey.
What he could come up with is calculation of what the usage, the square footage, what the, the overall design might need to be, and where it might fit on the property outside of that location.
But Jim, don't you have to know what your flow rate, or your-
Well, I think, I think-
You'll probably do a little bit of both, you'll probably get a sense of what size it needs to be, and then pick a spot.
Right, try to find a spot.
They're gonna do a perk test, to see what's there. Now, honestly, I was the project manager on that project back in nineteen eighty.
Really?
And which project are they?
Whoa, 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 hold on.
Put a, put a South of Chalk project on, yeah.
Put a site work. I worked, I worked the best way I might have.
Escrib.
And I was shocked when I saw the stratification, when we, when we cut that slope.
Yeah, the slope in the back.
It was unbelievable, it went from sand to, to stone, I mean, I mean, six to eight inch stone, to clay. So that whole site is gonna be interesting when you do, when you perk test.
To see what's it, it was a virgin, or was it, do you think it was-
Oh, no, it was virgin, because you, you saw the slope.
Yeah, yeah.
For the back of South of Chalk.
Yeah, yeah.
It was like a thirty-foot cut.
So it's not washed plain over till?
Usually you find, usually when you find a real nice, good, beautiful gravel, it cracks, crackles when you let it go with the excavator, it's usually like a fine silvery layer, or it's clay layer. It's like, God always gives you a little jump with something really good, you go, oh, I found something good, well, look, you got this here.
This is gonna buy you up.
Keeps cutting your toes, that's all.
I was never being amazed at one point.
I'm just absorbed by it.
Yeah, you see that, yeah.
Well, now they have that.
Right, it's on tape, forever now.
And that was thirty-seven years ago.
What, eighty, what year was eighty?
Nineteen eighty.
Nineteen eighty, who was in high school?
I was a kid.
All right, so thank you guys for coming in, and thank you Donna for joining our meeting, and bringing us some information, and we'll all find out more over the next couple of weeks. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, I appreciate it, I try to always record as I can. Good, I'm not trying to, you know, if I do anything wrong, I think you need to apologize for that.
Thanks for coming.
Nice to meet you, Allison.
Scott.
Thank you all.
There's, thank you.
Thanks, yeah.
Okay, we actually have put right in the middle here our administrative matters, so that maybe we can catch up on something.
Where is that, where's the folder? You have to do that for me.
You mean, the green folder is going around? And then we have to accept the minutes for July thirty-first and August sixth, which was the sidewalk, and in our-
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of July thirty-first.
Do we have a second?
Second.
On favor?
I don't think, also make a motion that we approve the main board minutes or something, August sixth, sidewalk, eleven a.m.
I have to pass one half of it, Mr. President.
Second. You want to do it? I thought you would.
On favor?
I want it, yeah.
Hi.
You wish, guys.
Are you okay? We'll ask you later if you're okay.
Sorry, I'm okay?
Yes. Positive.
I think there's a stop, but I think we can.
But you know what, we're still on the camera, why don't we talk later?
Sure.
That was much more important than the sidewalk, so. So we have, and we have to decide the necessary amount of, for the engineering review balance for Bristol Estates to cover site inspections. We have an estimate here from Tyler Nems, dated July nineteenth, and Tyler on Bristol Estates is recommending an estimated cost of sixty-five hundred dollars for, looks like ten inspections. On Taylor Street? Yeah, it's relatively small. So we need to make a motion that we're gonna request the amount of sixty-five hundred to be put into, or that we maintain?
I'll make a-
What do we have on the engineering balance now, Matthew?
Uh, for, I'd have to check, it's probably like maybe one or two thousand, I forget.
So are we asking him to bring the balance up to sixty-five hundred, or do we need extra?
I, I think, I think at least that, I mean, I think to be on the safe side, I would think slightly more, you know, because these, these are his estimates, and sometimes ones would be more depending on like, and I've heard Tyler and Peter tell me, kind of depending on like how good the contractor is and so-
What, what would move?
Only a motion that we requested bring their engineering balance up to seven thousand.
Just to be curious, what's, what's in our regs?
It's, it's, it's discretionary.
We had to keep a minimum of two thousand dollars in the account.
Uh, regs are not actually that.
I think we have, I think we have, I think it's like-
We have to have a minimum of that in the account.
It says that we can request that they maintain that balance, I think it's, Matthew and I were just going through those regs recently. We can pull the subdivision regs.
Yeah, the only reason I, I would say is we stay, try to stay consistent.
Yeah, Matt, yeah, I think the regs say it should be-
But it says, I mean-
Either four thousand or six thousand, but I think it also gives us discretion to ask for, to, to adjust the rest of the balance.
But just remember something, is that if you're gonna do that, you're gonna have to do it to everybody. Because you're gonna find out that someone is gonna say, well, you penalized me. I, that's why consistency around here, when it comes to money, you know, because-
Well, we have an estimate, that's that.
An estimate, but an estimate is for how many inspections. So if I'm a builder or a developer, I say, well, fine, if I do five inspections, I owe you three grand. After I do my five inspections, I will put three thousand dollars more into your account. That should be acceptable, I mean, you're asking for the front load of the whole estimate.
Yeah.
So technically, this is what it says. A deposit of not less than four thousand dollars shall be made payable for fees in relation to professional services, including engineering and review inspections at the time of the definitive plan supplemental, or at the time preliminary plan supplemental. Additional deposits of higher amounts may be required in the case of extraordinary size, construction design, or design change. As the above deposits are expended, the applicant shall, upon notice from the board, make further deposits in such a manner that the total deposit with the board, town shall at all times equal the initial amount as determined by the board. And the board shall not take any further action for the entity who owes fees, which have not been paid as required. Actually, it says, who owes fees whether or not relating to the partial one issue. And then we refund any deposit remaining.
Right, I, normally, normally what we used to do is just put, if you, if it's four thousand was the minimum, put four thousand dollars in it. Once they've expended, maintain it at four grand. So if you send a bill for-
For a thousand.
For a thousand, because sometimes, like, the engineer's gonna go out there, some of them are gonna be big, because it may be more inspection. Some of them will be small. If you, if you take the, if not, if you send a letter to them that their, that their account is below the four thousand dollars, and the board wants it to be, stay at four thousand dollars, then that's what it is.
But what did, what did we have for Bristol Estates to begin with, do we have four thousand, or more or less?
You mean, right now, or at the very beginning?
At the very beginning.
I think it was probably four thousand, and normally it would be, I mean, that's-
So we would only-
Just ask them to bring it up to the four thousand.
Just bring it back, that's what the elders used to do years ago.
Right, and that's the simplest way, keep it to four grand.
All right, all right, so are you gonna monitor, you're gonna withdraw your motion and submit a new one?
Yes, I would make a motion that we request other authors.
Yes.
I can do it all at one moment.
So you wanna request, so we have Bristol Estates, Bryson Way, and two sixty-two eighty, Oak Street?
And for Oak Street, I don't think you guys had definitively decided whether, you know, because it's a site plan, not a subdivision, whether you guys wanted to definitely do inspection.
Why don't we do the, the-
But it seemed to make sense to do that.
Let's do the subdivisions first, the Bristol Estates and the Bryson Way.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we, I'll make a motion that we request that Bristol Estates and Bryson Way both bring their engineering accounts up to the minimum of four thousand dollars.
Now, let me ask you this, though.
On Bryson Way, the estimate is eleven thousand three hundred.
Well, they have to bring it up a couple of times.
They have to keep throwing it up.
Well, this is the thing, we could ask for more than the four thousand.
Well, he's got a total of, how many inspections?
You've got fifty-six inspections.
It's fifty-six inspections and twenty-two reports, so that's not gonna happen in one month.
Right, so we've got time for them. But the idea is, you don't wanna take and bankrupt somebody, but, no.
Okay.
We don't need to sit on that.
No.
All right, so, so where, so your motion is that we bring the-
Yes.
Engineering review balances for Bristol Estates and Bryson Way?
Up to the minimum of four thousand.
Up to the minimum of four thousand dollars, and we ask for them to maintain it at that?
Right.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion, the one point I would wanna bring up is, in that letter- Discussion, the one point I would want to bring up is, in that letter, I am thinking that we should include the estimate from our engineers, of what they can expect.
You can tell them what the, what the engineers, I mean, if possible, be, uh, for the site.
I think that would be helpful, just to give them something to plan around.
Yeah.
Say this is an estimate, it's not conclusive, but just for your planning purposes, this is what we understand, disliking, what we anticipate. Okay.
And I guess the-
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, did you have?
Oh, no, you can, go ahead, but, but, yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 So I was just going to say, uh, in terms of then sort of, um, having sort of leverage in terms of when it runs low, and we say they need more, I guess, uh, if necessary, I suppose that if they're not getting inspected, then they can't proceed in a sense, or can we, should we, should we, I don't know.
No, 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 no. If, if you perceive that there's an issue on their account, you should rifle up a letter to them. CC us in a, in a meeting, that they're not up to, are not maintaining that, and therefore we can call them in. That's how you deal with it.
All right.
Uh, but, because you're the one that's going to know when the bill comes in before the plant, before we do it.
Exactly, yeah.
All right, because you're here during the day, and it should be, you, you have to look at notifying them to get loaned in their account, and that the board wants it maintained.
Oh, I can notify them at the question, but I can't, I can't press the-
Well, you can call them in here, and we can have an interview.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, if they don't come in and they don't keep their bill up, then we can, you know, we can refuse to issue any more approvals, we can ask the town to do the same.
Yeah, as long as, as long as we have some form of leverage, yeah.
If, if they spend two thousand dollars in, in bills, and we pay the two thousand dollars, as soon as we pay that, there should be a letter sent to them saying, you owe us another two grand to bring it up to the minimum. And if they don't, then we can have to-
Like, Joe, got a hash, yeah.
But just remember, is that there's been situations where people have built roads that haven't been inspected, all right? We'll have them go back and call, and do all types of, uh, to justify what they did, which costs them a lot more than the inspection worth. So that's what the tool is that the planning board can use, is, it can be painful. That's the next way to put it, well.
So the other thing we have in here is that we have to decide whether to have site inspections for two sixty, two eighty Oak Street, which is a site plan? I thought that when we talked about this with, um, two twenty Center Street, which is just, was that, that is a site plan, right? Mm-hmm. We had indicated that we at least want a final inspection.
Well, first off, is that in the, the one we have put in residence, then?
We feel like it's a storm bridge.
Well, we have, we have drainage on the front of our site, right? It's basically a subdivision that's a site plan.
But, like, yeah, if it's in the roadway, it's a subdivision, we want jurisdiction of the drainage, but I think we also want the strict, jurisdiction of the drainage on a site plan, because if it fails, then it fails out into the roadway.
Correct.
So on two sixty, two eighty Oak Street, Peter's suggesting that they, that we do inspections of the stormwater infiltration systems.
Right, that's good, that's, that's, that's the, that's the importance of home.
Yes. Oak Street extensions, yeah.
And I think it's kind of the same, similar for sort of two twenty Center Street, basically like, what happens within the site is the owner is sort of, that's their problem, their jurisdiction, but we want to be sure that there aren't going to be drainage issues, you know, going-
When we did the son of pause, we had the, we had Merrill Associates, even though it was in this, this site, uh, assess the, uh, drainage because of the, the, the problems that we have in the sun, so.
I think he's, why don't you, Peter's proposing?
So in, in this case, um, Peter's proposing that his estimated fees, not including review of the asphalt plan, is twenty-one seventy-five. Um, and this is a site plan, so I'm double checking, because however many times I go through this, I do-
For a site plan, it's six, uh, six thousand dollars is the initial balance. And I think-
Yeah, but there was something in here about, um-
What do we hold on, what do we hold on this, remember, it's the same developer? Where do we hold on, uh, was it five ninety-nine, Washington? That was a site plan, right?
That's Murphy?
Not Murphy, that was Gillis, was that?
Yeah, but two sixty, two eighty Oak Street, isn't that Murphy?
That's the, right, yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm thinking of Senate, I'm thinking, I'm thinking of Senate.
You're thinking of two twenty?
Thinking of two twenty.
Yeah, no, we're, we're talking about, um-
Oh, yeah, oh.
Oak Street right now, so with Oak Street, we've probably run through a fair amount of the initial deposit at this point, I think.
I think we have lots of inspections up there. There's a lot going, there's a lot going on, he's-
Watch a little tape.
Well, he's doing one building here, but he's bringing in another building down the road, and-
Well, he's got the, he's got the sidewalk issue with the trees and the berm, and leveling up that lot, and the fence is all part of this.
That's what I'm saying, there's going to be a lot of stuff going on, so.
Is it, is it, isn't there going to be inspections for the, for the, for the water?
There should be inspections for the drainage and-
The drainage.
So, so the language on this is a little different. For technical and consultation consultant review fee, the applicant deposits six thousand prior to the public hearing, and from this deposit, the planning board's consultant shall be reimbursed. If that amount will be exceeded, the planning board shall notify the applicant and request additional funds. So Matthew, do we, how much of the six thousand do we have left? Do we know?
Um, I don't know, I mean, it's, I can check, but I don't know off the top of my head. But I mean, I think the bottom line is, I just need to tell them, bring it up to such and such.
Well, I don't know if it needs to come back up to six thousand.
Oh, no, probably not, yeah, but I mean, up to, you know, yeah, whatever you have.
We only have, you know, twenty-two hundred, yeah.
It's on Oak, yeah, it probably should be at six thousand, I'd bring it up.
Yeah, I would-
Why, up to six thousand?
You have, you have a lot of roadwork that happened on, on Oak Street.
Yeah.
The trees, the berm, the leveling of the lot, with the fencing.
And there's going to be another building coming in.
The fencing, the two buildings.
But I think Peter is only proposing to do the, at least for this project, to just do-
Yeah, but that's-
Inspections to the tune of like two thousand dollars, so, for this project, anyway.
That's, but he's limiting himself to what, the design of the two buildings and the drainage? I'm looking at the whole site, because to me, the whole site is, we gave them approval for that with the tree layouts on the roadway, the sidewalk, right?
Yeah.
The fence.
That's in our roadway.
And-
Correct.
And, and the drainage that's on the street, uh, you also have the leveling that they were going to do to that lot. Somebody's got to look at it, whether they're removing or bringing in soil.
No, I said, there's a lot going on there.
Yeah, no. I would think we would more akin to six thousand.
Right.
Really, that high?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Just speaking.
Yeah.[1688.51]